Thank you, everyone, for joining our meeting tonight. It's nice to see a lot of unfamiliar faces in the room and familiar faces.[15.17][15.17](Laughter). Tonight, the Board of Selectmen, Agenda Monday, February 7th, Warquay Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. Broadcast live on local cable, Channel 18. Public call-in number 508-539-1449. Stream live on the town of Mashpee's website, www.mashpema.gov/Chanel18. It is 6:30, and we're convening this meeting an open session. We'll start off with a Pledge of Allegiance. Please. And I would like a moment of silence, please. I'm going to defer this moment to our Town Manager for an appointment. I mean, I'm sorry.
Yes, Madam Chair. I think it's appropriate to say that I had a visitor at my office this morning who I'm familiar with. I also have a phone call. I've had emails regarding the petition article that was on the agenda before the Board. I called the petitioner, Mr. Dick Terry, and I want to inform the Board that he has agreed to withdraw the petition, provided that I sit down with him and discuss any issues that he feels that can be addressed. I don't know all of the issues, but I feel that the petition is not necessarily the resolution to the issues in general. So I have a contact with the Barnstable County Sportsman's League, and I thank all of those who spoke to me earlier today. I feel very confident in saying to the Board that we're going to make contacts with these organized groups, and whatever the issues are, we'll get them addressed and we'll get them resolved, and there's no need to take any action on the petition because the petition is being withdrawn. And Mr. Terry authorized me to tell the Board that.
Thank you, Rodney.
Thank you.
Good work, Madam Chair.
Yes. You are very welcome. We didn't want you to sit through the whole meeting.[191.12][191.12](Applause). So you're not obligated to stay, but you can if you would like to listen.[197.48][197.48](Laughter). We don't mind seeing you. Okay, we're going to convene a joint meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust, the discussion and approval of transfer title of real property located at 108 Commercial Street, Mashpee's Assessor Map 81 Parcel 130, for the purposes of affordable housing development. And we have Alan.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Alan. Okay, open for discussion. Alan, you want to start?
Well, it's been a long time. We've been waiting for this step, and I'm thrilled that we're taking it tonight. So I see no reason to delay. I'm all for it.
I think we all are.
I can move that we do that.
Okay. So Andrew, please.
Motion. Madam Chair, make a motion at the Board.
Wait a minute. Just let everybody leave quietly.
Good.
Thank you. Go ahead.
The Board votes to transfer all right, title, and interest of the town of Mashpee in and to the parcel of real property identified at 108 Commercial Street, Assessor's Map 81 Parcel 130, to the Mashpee Affordable Housing Trust for the purposes of developing affordable housing and to authorize the execution of a deed to effect said transfer and title upon final preparation thereof by Town Council.
Second.
Roll call. Mike?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
And Alan?
Yes.
And yes for me. Michael?
I move that the Board of Trustees vote to accept all right, title, and interest of the town of Mashpee in and to the parcel of real property identified as 108 Commercial Street, Assessor's Map 81 Parcel 130, for purposes of developing affordable housing, to authorize the execution of a certificate of acceptance of deed for recording with the deed to consummate and transfer of title, and further, to authorize the acceptance of grant funds from the Mashpee Economic Development and Industrial Corporation, EDIC, for the purposes of conducting a feasibility study in conjunction with the EDIC relative to the proposed development of affordable housing at 108 Commercial Street site, and to authorize the Town Manager to procure such services and execute such contracts or other instruments as may be necessary to proceed with such feasibility study.
Do I have a second? Roll call. Tom?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
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 And now we'll vote.
Just think, the first motion was just for the Board of Selectmen because we're transferring it over. And even though it was unanimous vote, just to clarify, the vote of the members of the Affordable Housing Trust wouldn't qualify for that. I don't think we need to re-vote, do we?
Okay, we don't.
But we've got.
I will vote on this motion, yes.
Yes, okay, good. Thank you, Alan. And?
Make a motion to adjourn the Affordable Housing Trust.
Second. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes, yes. Thank you, everybody.[410.13][410.13](Laughter). That was a quick meeting.
Such a long meeting.
Thank you, Alan.
Good news is good.
John, Andrew did.
No, no, Affordable Housing.
Edit.
Andrew, yeah. Okay. Does that mean I have somebody on the line?
It means there could be somebody on the line.
Alan still there?
Alan's gone.
Might be for public comment.
Oh, maybe. I don't think so.
Madam Chair, we don't have anybody else zooming in, do we?
Pardon me?
We don't have anyone else zooming, zooming, do we?
I don't think so. I'm going to start off with a public message. A few weeks ago, I sat before this board meeting and requested that we, as a community, turn down the temperature. I advocated civility and respect in public meetings. We must understand that there will be differences of opinion. Compromise will not always come easy. Today, I would like to refer to Policy 54. I've given it in your packets tonight, and if anyone needs it, we have a copy, that was adopted by this Select Board June 4th, 2007. It specified professional conduct for members of Boards, Committees, Commissions in conducting official town business. It states to uphold and advance the honor, dignity, and reputation of the town of Mashpee. It does list standards. I'm not going to read them, but they're here for anyone to read. The town has a reference guidebook that includes a committee handbook on how to be an effective member of a public board, an open-meeting law summary, and a public records law summary. I implore everyone to keep these standards of decorum in perspective. I strongly recommend that all members of a Board, Committee, or Commission receive a copy of it at the office of the Town Manager. It's important for residents to understand the roles and responsibility of Boards, Committees, and Commissions. It is also important for all of us to respect differences of opinion and to encourage meaningful dialogue and not discourage it. In the spirit, let us work together in the best interest of Mashpee. We have a lot of work to do, and we need everyone's participation. This volunteer position on these Boards have become a second job to many, for which we have on our plate: housing, wastewater, comprehensive plan. And we need your trust and your respect for us to do our job. Thank you. Now I have public comment. Lynn Barbie.
Madam Chair and Select Board Members, first, I'd like to thank you, Chairwoman Sherman, for those comments. I believe that some of what I'm saying echo the same thing. So, golly gee, who could imagine that the Planning Board Chair had reached a deal with Mashpee Commons to trade Trout Pond land for the rest of the three-party development details? Wow. They sure kept that a secret from the rest of us. You all remember the cart and the horse? I really thought I would have to, I could put that away, but... So it seems that Mr. Filon had access to the horse, the details of the development plan, when the rest of us only knew about the cart, the bylaw. I guess he was working in the stable or behind the scenes on this trade. But thank you, Mr. Filon, for sharing, finally sharing this with the town citizens in your letter to the editor of Mashpee Enterprise on February 4th. But really, is it too late for Mashpee Commons to do the right thing and donate the land to the town for green space? I mean, what does Buff Chase need with a pond full of bats? It's never too late for him to do the right thing, and he has stood in this very room and called himself a philanthropist. The three-party agreement failed because Mr. Chase never provided the town with the details of the development plan. Many of us were asking and waiting. Meanwhile, it seems that the Planning Board Chair was engaged in some kind of negotiation. Now I will echo your comments. Well, so Mr. Filon needs to stop bullying those of us who want to make public comment. He violated his own rules, especially Number 5, and I quote, "Please be respectful, thoughtful, and courteous," unquote. He may not agree with public comments, but it is an insult to all residents and the rest of the Planning Board members to attack personally one citizen's opinion. Mashpee deserves better. You, the Select Board Members, set the tone. You are the leadership of this town, and we all deserve basic decency and open democracy. Our local comprehensive plan is way too important to have this divisive and insulting person in charge. He may not believe it, but I, and I believe all of us here, want the best for the town. That means cooperation and respect and no backroom deals. Thank you.
Brian Whedon.
Brian Whedon, 133 Main Street. But tonight, I'm here as the Chairman of the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe. Long before the town was incorporated, our people, the Wampanoag, have been here for over 12,000 years and did not have the colonial concept of ownership when it comes to our land. Our instructions from the Creator was and still is to take care of the earth and the land, and she will provide for us as our ancestors have done before us. The land is us, and we are the land; therefore, it's important we speak for all of our relations and stand here this evening as proud members of the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe, the same tribe whose Indian plantation and lands had been incorporated against our will and still to this day have clear title to the land. When Mashpee was, oh, now that, when Mashpee was incorporated, the Allotment Act came into play, and we had, quote, "common lands," land that was for the community in our sustenance. Now it's called "public lands," the same land that was illegally taken by both the town and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts from our people. It's also important to note that we, as a sovereign nation, are one of the very few tribes with their Aboriginal rights, a birthright that cannot be taken. So we come before you tonight to let you know the following. A) Indians cannot be prohibited from practicing Aboriginal rights in their usual and accustomed places. One, in the Winans, the Supreme Court of the United States ruled that the federal government had the authority to limit states from barring Indian tribes and their tribal members from exercising their Aboriginal rights, quote, "all usual and accustomed places." Two, Indians have an easement over private lands to gain access to their usual and accustomed places. Again, in Winans, the U.S. Supreme Court said that the right of Indian tribes to practice their Aboriginal right in their usual and accustomed places, quote, "fix in the land such easement as enables the right to be exercised." B) The federal government has consistently recognized the Aboriginal hunting, fishing, trapping, and gathering rights of the Mashpee Wampanoag. The United States Department of the Interior in 2007's final determination of federal acknowledgment of the Mashpee Wampanos confirms the existence of these rights. The federal acknowledgment makes repeated references to the Mashpee Wampanoag's hunting, fishing, and harvesting of natural resources from the, quote, "contact" period through the colonial and revolutionary periods to the present. C) From the earliest days of the statehood in 1788, Massachusetts has recognized the Aboriginal rights of the Mashpee Wampanoag. In the 1970s, Governor DeCaucus issued an executive order recognizing the, quote, "special relationship with the Native American people of this region," and ordering the State Agency shall deal directly with the appropriate tribal councils on matters affecting the Mashpee, Gayhead Wampanoag, and other Wampanos, along with the Nittmuck Indians. And while the town is not a state agency, it should take this into consideration as we continue to ask for meaningful consultation on any and all issues before the town as we share this community. So now that we're all on the same page and caught up to speed, one, if this article was approved to town meeting, it would not apply to tribal members. Two, we are here to educate the town on our Aboriginal rights and history. And three, if the town feels otherwise, we have extended an invitation to meet Board to Board and still have yet to receive a response. This joint meeting would be the appropriate time to address these issues, government to government. In conclusion, the Mashpee Wampanoag have continuously exercised their hunting, fishing, trapping, and gathering rights in what is now southeastern Massachusetts and eastern Rhode Island since time immemorial. These Aboriginal rights are of critical importance of the physical survival of the Mashpee Wampanoag and their community, traditions, life ways, and culture. The tribe will continue to protect and practice its Aboriginal rights and will not take any attacks on our sovereignty. I'd also like to note that this will only cause more harm, division, and animosity between tribal members and non-tribal members, and we all don't want to relive the '70s. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Elena Doyle.
I originally came here tonight to speak against support of any prohibition to hunting, but now that that has been taken off the table, I wanted to thank Carol for what she just said about kind of reuniting the community and getting on track with respect because I think it's much needed. If I may, I also wanted to ask a question while I have you guys right in front of me. When does the charter review process start?
The review, wait, do we know when that starts again?
I don't know. It's 25, but I think it's...
2025.
2025.
But it can be held sooner if the selectmen choose.
Oh, okay.
I'm pretty sure.
Okay, great. And where, if anyone knows off the top of the head, where I could find more information on that?
Call the Selectmen's Office in the morning.
Awesome. Thank you, Carol.
You're welcome. Anthony Wilig. Hello.
I'm Anthony Wilig. I live at 3 Sandy Fox Drive here in Mashpee. I came to talk about the proposal to ban discharge and hunting. It seems like that's been put off. I'm not sure exactly how we're going to be informed about these, what seem to be more or less, secret discussions you'll be having with Mr. Terry. I don't know how that's going to proceed, which makes me a little nervous. Anyway, I had a few things I did want to say, and they're probably still appropriate, so if you don't mind, I'll say them. The main thing that interests me is why this ordinance would ever be necessary. I can't think of a single instance, here in Mashpee, and I've lived here for five years, that this ordinance would have prevented or made better. Now, I don't know everything that goes on in town, of course, but I just don't think there is a demonstrated need for this ordinance at all. So I ask if we do consider an ordinance like this in the future, that we need some facts that prove that it's actually necessary. I don't understand how it could be, considering some of the laws that we have here in Massachusetts around hunting and around shooting. But I want to make sure that anything like this, that this proposal is not just an expression of personal preference or prejudice, but there's an actual need for the proposal. I need that to be proved. For fact, I mean, the discharge of firearms is essentially not allowed anywhere in Mashpee open space now, as far as I know, not in the wildlife conservation areas or in the wildlife management areas run by the state. If you're not hunting, you can't discharge a firearm. And of course, you can only hunt in season. So really, the proposal is an anti-hunting proposal. And hunting and shooting are a traditional pursuit enjoyed by a significant percentage of the population here in Mashpee. And it just seems wrong for a small subset to endeavor to make illegal the legal activities that are heavily regulated already. I mean, this idea that we need to control other people and other legal activities and make them illegal, it's a problem. I mean, we know that hunting regulations include a 500-foot buffer zone around homes, 150-foot buffer zone away from state or hard-surface roads, and hunting is only, is not allowed on Sunday, and the seasons are relatively short. I mean, I just don't see where the impact is that would cause an ordinance like this to be required. I wanted to read a letter that a friend asked me to share here. "With the increase in human population in eastern Massachusetts, sustainable wildlife habit, habitat is decreasing at an alarming rate. As this habitat is destroyed, wildlife has suffered in that the habitat becomes overpopulated, such that it is unable to sustain the health of wildlife. Animal disease, accidents with vehicles, nuisance, encroachment are all examples of unwanted results of unsustainable wildlife populations. Hunting is an essential part of the North American model of wildlife conservation, and the Pittman-Robinson Act of 1937 provides federal funding to states to maintain hunting areas through taxes on firearms, ammunition, and other hunting equipment. With the science-based regulations provided by biologists at the Massachusetts Department of Fish and Wildlife, hunting is a means to control wildlife population to healthy, sustainable levels, in addition to providing a natural and organic food for consumption. In addition to the ecological benefits, hunting provides an opportunity for us to connect with our natural environment. It allows us to explore our relationship with the outdoors in ways that cannot be compared to other outdoor activities. Hunting requires attention to the natural details in the woods that are often overlooked by hikers, cyclists, and other visitors to the woods. It is an activity that provides a moderate level of exercise and has no set schedule. It's a proven stress reliever and allows lifelong bonds to be made between family and friends. Given the importance that hunting plays in the ecosystems and our lives in general, it is clear that maintaining of public land for hunting in conjunction with other legal activities is essential. Clearly, open-space land in eastern Massachusetts is dwindling, and land parcels with enough buffer to meet Massachusetts hunting setback regulations are becoming even more difficult to find." That kind of sums up the situation here in Mashpee, too. I hope that somehow we'll be able to communicate, I mean, I just found out about this meeting today, and it surprised me that, that a group of intelligent folks, as we have here in Mashpee, would even consider such a proposal. So my question is, how will we be informed about these discussions you'll be having? What will they result in? I mean, who gets to vote on them?
Mr. Town Manager.
We don't generally engage in an exchange during public comments, but with the authorization of the Chair, I'll make an exception. First and foremost, any person or any group has a right to petition. Town meeting, I believe it's 10, for the Board, there's a charter provision. If they petition, then the petitioner or petitioners have an opportunity to come before the public body and state their reasons in terms of why they believe this is a good idea. The Board had not even taken into consideration the merits or otherwise to this petition. It was just an opportunity for a person to be heard. So the process is, if a person wants to be heard, he or she has an opportunity to seek a spot on the agenda, to come in, which this gentleman did. He was coming before the Board with an opportunity to present the merits, whether they be lacking or not, to state why this potential bylaw would be a good idea. I'm not here to debate the merits or demerits to the proposal itself. When I spoke to people this morning, I tried to communicate for the sole purpose of getting things done without a lot of conflict or an opportunity for people to get riled up over something that can be avoided. And in this particular case, every single person that I spoke to thought it was a good idea to try to reach out to the gentleman, which I did. And I did not consult with the Board before reaching out to the gentleman. I reached out to him in my official capacity. We had a very constructive, reasonable discussion, and I did not try to necessarily influence him, but I did try to say, can we take a step back and hit pause to see if we can resolve any of the issues that you may have? He thought that that was a good idea. So that's what I did. And every person that I spoke to said, "Thank you," all of the folks, some of which were in this room earlier. So that's what happened. And in terms of where it goes from here, obviously, if there was a bylaw, it would have to obviously be lawful. It goes through a lot of reviews. The Select Board, it goes to town meeting, it will go to the AG's office. Where it would have ultimately ended, I don't know. People could argue it was a terrible idea, but the fact of the matter is, a petitioner has a right to be heard. And in terms of any secret meeting, I wouldn't necessarily call it a secretive meeting because I'm sure that I'll be reporting to the Board in public session at some point what the end result was. Where do I plan on going? I plan on going where I told Mr. Terry I would go. I would assist him in bringing his issues or his grievances to these organized groups, sit down, have a nice friendly chat, hopefully get the issues resolved, put to bed, and be able to come back and report to the Board. It's a non-issue. We move on.
Okay. Well, I wish you luck with that. And I, like I say, I hope that in the future, we'll have a little more warning about some of this stuff, both the proposal itself and then the cancellation of the proposal.
We post our agendas.
Yes.
In the newspaper.
You got the same warning the five of us got up here.
Yes. That's exactly what we got.
Okay.
You know, there's no, I just want to jump in for a second. You know, the implication that, you know, in questioning what's going to happen with it, you know, Mr. Collins conducts his business with full integrity and the full support of this Board.
And I don't doubt that.
Well, there was an implied, I took your comment to the contrary. And I'll tell you this. The, you know, where this is going to go, it's going to come, if it moves at all, it's going to either go through a citizen's right to petition, in which case they can get tenant signatures and put anything before town meeting they want. Doesn't involve this Board, that's their absolute right to do so. Anything that doesn't comes through this Board, and it's going to get handled the way, everything that gets handled through this Board in full, open meeting with full public disclosure and full notice. You might like it, you might not. But the truth of the matter is, other people have said, "For our Selectmen, set the tone for what happens in this town meeting," that's our tone. And this constant, you know, undercurrent and sniping at people and using language that you're calling other people to task for using, all it does is undermine the credibility of the arguments that's being made to the contrary. So to put a finer point on Carol's point, we're calling it, we do things above board on this Board. Mr. Collins and his staff do things above board on this Board, and that's how we conduct our business, and the expectation we'll hold everybody else to, where we have authority over them.
Thank you, Andrew.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I need approval of the following. Monday, January 24, 2022, regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, John?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. Communication and correspondence, we did have one communications from Karen Fox. Back mail.
One other, just a, I didn't forward the email, but we got notice from Rose Forbes from the Air Force notifying us that the Air Force had executed a contract for the construction of the water treatment facility to resolve the PFAS contamination at the Water District's Turner Wells. So what she said she'd do, she did. That project is contracted and underway, hopefully up before the summer, to protect, restore that water supply to the district.
That is good news, very good news. Old business, none, new business. Okay, new business. Town Manager Rodney Collins with presentation of the fiscal year 2023 operating budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm pleased to present the recommended fiscal year 2023 operating budget to the Select Board. In addition, please find the recommended Capital Improvement Program recommendation unanimously endorsed by the Capital Improvement Program Committee. My recommendation for the operating budget is $66,016,686, or total increase of 3.68%. The Department head request totaled $67,226,681. My recommendation is $1,209,995 less than the requested total amount. The operating budget does not add any new staffing, although warrant articles being prepared by departments may result in such proposals. Additionally, although staffing needs are justified in my office and accounting, I did not recommend any additional personnel being funded. Estimated receipts increased by $120,000 due to an increase in the occupancy tax and higher mitigate reimbursement received. Estimated new growth is projected at $700,000 after consultation with the Director of Assessing. Free cash to be utilized is $1,500,000, which is consistent with the previous fiscal years. The total estimated excess levy capacity for fiscal year 23 is $2,8,702. This recommendation includes using more school choice funds to offset operating costs consistent with the schools' budget narrative of the past three years. The Town will continue to update the revenue analysis with fiscal year 23 cherry sheet figures as it proceeds through the budget approval process. Pending financial consideration this year include contract negotiations, all collective bargaining agreements, personal administration plan, and personal service contracts that need to be planned for, including the total cost and length of time. Sustaining operations, upcoming expenditures, including personnel or contractual costs, will need to be forecasted for wastewater management, so true and accurate projections are calculated in long-term financial planning. How much excess levy capacity do we want to sustain? Wastewater operations, what are the estimated funds needed in timeframe to obtain? Revenue sources, are there any new sources to identify? A total of $3,130,905 capital expenditures are also recommended by the CIP Committee of the amount. $1,745,165 is recommended from free cash, and $1,385,740 is recommended for capital stabilization, which requires a two-thirds vote. Additionally, $376,000 is recommended from free cash for a Santuot Pond article for a diagnostic study and implementation of water quality improvements for Mashpee-Wakeby. Finally, it's my recommendation to study the scope of the HVAC system upgrades at school facilities and town hall, as well as any facility as recommended by the Director of Public Works. This is a project that will require funding next year.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Okay, and then you want to do it, you just did the overview of the fiscal.
Right.
Couple of questions.
And I'll just give a brief overview on CIP in terms of the specifics. As recommended, a total from DPW is $288,500. From the Fire Department, $215,000. From Information Technology, $50,000. And from Natural Resources, $180,200. All of those are recommended to come out of capital stabilization. Planning and construction, a total of $264,805. All of that is recommended to come out of capital stabilization, with the exception of the DNR facility and the MMHS field improvement, which would be recommended to come out of free cash. There is also the breakdown in terms of free cash, I may have already mentioned, but is $1,745,165. And the total from stabilization, $1,385,740, for a total of $3,130,905. As mentioned, $376,000 from free cash is recommended for the Santuot article. And there is also, which I failed to mention, a archives or historical project for the protection of certain archives items that is being recommended through CPA.
Okay.
Question.
Any questions?
Yeah. Your memo sites increased in occupancy room tax. Could you just advise us what the difference in revenue is projected to be for this upcoming fiscal year compared to what it's been the last couple?
Yes. Okay, for 2020, the general fund estimate was $25,000. The actual was $66,888. I should add that the 75% wastewater stabilization was $200,664. The 25% general fund was $66,888, for a total of $267,552. In '21, the total was $753,936. The breakdown was, for 75% wastewater stabilization, it was $565,452. And the 25% general fund was $188,484. In '22, the total is $725,930.
To date.
To date.
To date, yeah.
Yes. And the breakdown to date is, 75% wastewater stabilization is $544,448. And the 25% general fund is $181,483.
And what's the projection for '23?
I...
But it's up.
Yes, I don't have that in front of me, sir.
Okay. And then, my recollection is that the actuals this year, and therefore what's projected for next year, are higher than what was assumed in the wastewater budget.
Yes.
Projections.
Yes.
So we're running ahead of where we were estimated to be. If you recall, those numbers were held steady, not increasing for 30 years. And obviously, we're up, so it runs to our benefit. Gives us more room to pull money out for wastewater. And then what's your actual marijuana revenue versus what was promised by you?
That's a little bit of a disappointment, but...
Really?
I'm sorry, what was the question for which fiscal year?
Any one of them.
Okay. Right now, for fiscal '22, we've got looks like it looks like $50,000 retail actual. But I just want to make sure that I'm gathering all of this info accurately or reporting it accurately, because I do know that there's the impact fee, and then there is the tax. And I just want to make sure that I'm breaking it down accurately. So let me just double-check these, and I will get back to you. But I can tell you unequivocally that the numbers in terms of the original projections compared to what we are receiving is off.
By large volume.
By a large volume.
Right, I would say.
So I don't know if it's the black market, or I don't know what the cause is. But I can tell you that the numbers are not where we had hoped they would be in terms of revenue.
I'm glad we weren't depending on them.
I know. We rode the right horse for wastewater.
Yes, we did. Okay, liaison reports.
One question for the, on the budgets.
Sure, I'm sorry.
Where were we at with the solar project? Was that money coming out of the CIP?
You're talking about the, at the schools?
Yes.
No, it wasn't coming out of CIP. It was, some of it was, but CEVAC is where it was coming from. And that's been delayed due to just supply chain, everything else that everybody's hearing.
Okay.
COVID.
Thank you.
It's still there, and it's still anticipating to come forward, it's just going to be delayed.
Got you.
Tom, any questions?
I have two other questions, actually, and it came up today. I was thinking about the Falmouth Road Apartments, affordable housing units. Do we have a, know where we're going with that, and what the holdup is? And is there any schedule for construction?
You're talking about the...
9/50?
9/50?
Yes.
No, it's waiting for funding through HAC. And they have all their applications in place, but they haven't got the funding. They're hoping for it this spring to get the funding and then be able to start the project in the fall. That's the last I heard, but that's been a month or more now.
Right, and it's, the thing, it just comes to mind, we're looking at the industrial park, and we approved this, I mean, it's got to be two or three years ago.
I know, everything takes so long.
Oh, it's more, yeah.
Takes so long to get where we are.
I know, I know, the process is just
It's unbelievable.
It just drags.
Yeah, it does, and it's unfortunate. HAC, it's got a lot to do with the federal funding come forward and funding that they can get to start the project.
The way you hear the federal government handing out cash to everybody, and here we are waiting for a project to put a shovel in the ground, and we don't have any money.
No.
John, any questions?
Thanks for the update.
Okay, Town Manager's updates.
The only thing that I wanted to make the Board aware of is we've got a technical flaw changing over the Board of Selectmen to Select Board.
Oh, I saw that today.
So according to the AG's office, the issue was, and I'll quote, "We disapproved the portion of Article I amending the Town's zoning bylaws to change the name of the Board of Selectmen to Select Board throughout the Town's zoning bylaws because the Town did not comply with General R. Chapter 40A, Section 5, procedures for amending zoning bylaws, including holding a planning board and adopting Article I by a two-thirds vote." And then they went on to say, "General R. Chapter 40A, Section 5 establishes the specific procedure the Town must follow when amending its zoning bylaws as follows." Quote, "No zoning bylaw or amendment thereto shall be adopted until after the planning board in a Town has held a public hearing thereon, at which interested persons shall be given an opportunity to be heard," close quote. The AG goes on, or the representative from the AG's office, I should say, "Here, the planning board did not hold a hearing on the proposed amendments to the zoning bylaw, nor did Town Meeting adopt Article I by a two-thirds vote as required by General R. Chapter 40A, Section 5. The failure to hold the planning board hearing required under General R. Chapter 40A, Section 5, and to adopt the zoning amendments by a two-thirds, excuse me, vote, are fatal defects that render the adoption of the zoning bylaw amendments inconsistent with state law. We are working with Town Council to correct it."
The other parts went into effect.
Yes.
And they did set up a public hearing for the planning board, for that, I believe.
Yes, they did.
The only reason why I'm reading it is because we received it between your last meeting and this meeting, and I just want to make you aware that we have received this notice.
Thank you.
And, oh, on the other item, COVID cases. Today and over the weekend, we added 12 new positive COVID-19 cases in O'Des. There are 36 current cases in Mashpee, and 23 cases have moved out of isolation. That's the COVID update.
It is nice to see that the numbers are coming down.
Yes.
And people are still being careful, which is good. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn? Roll call, John? Andrew?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.